Open the regular session of the town council. We're drawing in a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with everything and justice for all.
Gee, we have the public hearing, we have public comment. Quite a nice crowd here tonight, so, public comment?
We want to thank you for all the work that you've done in the past year or so to get us work on our building, and it'll be another two years and all the things that you have to decide. So, our artist kids did their thumbprint and did their hair color and eyes, and the older siblings of our staff did their, um...
I'll pass that around.
The building. Who did I forget sharing? Oh, no.
Alright, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Ms. Bradley?
I just wanted to let everybody know that we lost a veteran. Uh, his name is Lieutenant Commander Joseph Langdale, uh, United States Navy, and he was a survivor of the U.S. Arizona's. He died yesterday at a hundred years old.
A surviving officer.
Just to make sure, you know, Vicki's comments were with regards to the community development block grant and the Head Start program.
Okay, if I published this, then, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Any other public comment? Yes?
Um, yes, well, I'm here to comment about...
Name, please.
Jan Wright, citizen of Lakeview. Um, all, everything that I have been hearing about the wood burning stoves and people being fined, and, um, the rumor is that even the new standard stoves will be outlawed in a year, and my concern is, um, I understand that the towns, county, whatever, gets green points from the EPA for eliminating wood burning smoke.
They give what?
Green points, green dots. Yeah, I believe that's true.
We're just keeping track of those dots.
Well, they, it's not funny.
That's the first I've ever heard of that.
And to be applied to industry. Well, I've heard it from several sources that are pretty legitimate, so, I will, um, I don't have, I don't use a computer, so I can't verify any of this, but it requires some investigation into that. Um, and I am a proponent of wood burning stoves. I like having the new standard stove because I feel good about it. We always have to be considerate of our neighbors, and, um, you know, be sure that our smoke is not going into other people's buildings, homes, whatever, and, um, but I much prefer that over fossil fuel burning, um, even if the particulate matters are less. I still don't know what those particulate matters are, and the extraction of fossil fuels is, we all know the horrors of that and the carbons that they release. Um, so that is one. And then my second concern is about the Red Rock biofuel plant that's being proposed. I haven't, I don't know, I've been gone. I've been up in Long Beach, that little spin in the ocean for a while, so, um, you know, I come home to a lot of new things, including this potential plant being placed here. I have so many questions about it. I don't know if I'm for it or against it. I can't take a real, I don't know, because who knows? You know, we all have a million questions, and I don't know if there have been any public meetings to address any of them.
As far as the wood stove ordinance and things like that, there were three public meetings that were held. We had two discussions at town hall.
Right, right.
Uh, okay.
With regards, I just want to make one thing perfectly clear, and there have, you know, I don't know who's saying it, but there have been no fines.
Well, that surprised anyone except fines.
There has not been a single fine this winter, uh, so, there has been zero.
Well, I, someone reported that.
There was nothing mailed out to anybody.
No, there were letters mailed out with regards to warnings and that there are, that our ordinances do allow fines and people should comply with the rules and stuff, but there was nobody, as nobody, zero fines.
Or, or has anyone did deny an exception?
Yes, there was one. There was a commercial, a commercial business was denied an exemption because our ordinance specifically says that there, that there will be no exemptions for wood burning stoves in commercial structures.
Okay, but it did not include a fine?
It did not include a fine.
Were they warned?
Uh, yeah, that they shouldn't burn any longer on, uh, red or yellow days, they can still use it on green days.
Were they warned that if they did, they would be fined? Was that part of the warning?
I, Jan, I can't remember what the letter specifically said.
Okay, well, you know, this is all, this is, can get out of hand very easily, right?
But there were no fines.
With, um, talk.
Well, the, the thing of it is, is talk and rumors serve absolutely no purpose. If, if there's a question or whatever, call town hall and ask, come in, pick up a coffee at the ordinance, read through it, get yourself familiar with it and understand it. That alleviates a lot of these problems and certainly gets rid of a lot of the rumors, so, you know, it, it's, uh, I hear the rumors also. I, I disregard rumors. You, you need to come to town hall, address, um, you know, start with Amy, um, she's a very kind young lady, and don't yell and scream at her. Yeah, this Amy, yeah. No, but, but really, you know, she has a job she does, she's hired by us to do the job. Treat her with respect, talk to her. If you don't get satisfaction from Amy, see Mr. Sims. If you don't get it from Mr. Sims, then see the mayor or the council or all of us combined. But, you know, don't buy into rumors. Come in and...
In regards to the green carbon credits, I think is what you're speaking of, and that is for the larger corporation, or not corporation, the larger manufacturing plants in the state of Oregon, and they can earn green carbon by depending on what their output is.
What, a tax pay kind of thing?
But, but it really has nothing to do with our wood burning stove.
No, wood burning stove is what we're doing, no.
No, no, I don't believe so, and I may be speaking out of line, but I don't...
Okay, I, I would appreciate, you know, uh...
Well, we appreciate your concerns and questions, and that's the only way they can be straightened out.
Yes, exactly.
Right, right. And is there going to be public conversation about Red Rock biofuels?
There has been some, some meetings at the county courthouse in regards to the Red Rock biofuels plant, and so, you know, I, the meetings were open to the public, I attended a couple of them, and so...
What about the town? I mean, if there's...
We haven't been directly involved yet. We, we had one meeting that involved Red Rock, that, um, the town and the county had a joint meeting, and that was the expansion of the enterprise zone last summer, uh, which was, uh, by expanding the enterprise zone south into the property that, where Red Rock is planning to locate, then they're eligible for property tax exemptions under state economic development standards.
And it also renamed ag land, that's industrial land?
No, no, it did not. No, it did not. Uh, now, recently, uh, more recently, Red Rock applied to the county for a land use permit to establish their facilities on this particular piece of property, and that has all been going through the county, and so, you know, we have, other than, I'm aware that they've been doing this, we haven't been involved in the decisions or process with regards to that yet, Jan. So, uh, you know, if Red Rock actually does come to site in Lakeview at some time in the future, uh, ultimately, they need to do an urban growth boundary expansion, um, or adjustment or something. Uh, they will need to, uh, be annexed into the town of Lakeview so that we can provide them with water and sewer services, and, you know, there's, there's three or four steps along the way for that to happen.
And that's where we would come in with the voice. At this point, we don't have a voice in this?
At this point, as far as the town is involved, as far as the town is involved at this point, we haven't had, uh, any, any permit applications, any processes that required or even alluded to the town having meetings with regards to that.
You know, it's, pardon me for being so sensitive about this. I was in Dallas when, um, West Texas Fertilizer Plant grew up. It killed campus people, leveled the town, well, about half of the town. It devastated that small community besides Lakeview, and the potential for that is just always there. You know, it's, this is real volatile stuff we're talking about, you know? Plus, having the defense department in our community. Excuse me, but, you know, it's getting to be real heavy here.
Was there a zoning approved?
Your name, please?
John.
The county approved a zoning permit, I believe they called it.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
What did this ordinance, I mean, I didn't come to the meeting when the ordinance was made up. How did that all come about?
Ordinance eight fifty-one that you're talking about? Uh, it was a regular, uh, process, so, we started off with the, um...
Make it short, I know.
Pardon?
You can make it short.
Okay, well, like I said earlier, we had, I know of at least three public meetings, uh, that, that two were in town, one was on the west side. We had, um, a committee of concerned citizens, appointed citizens, um, the town council, we met, I don't know how many times?
Ten or twelve.
Yeah, I, you know, I'd say half a dozen or more times. That was all done. We had a, we had, um, uh, discussion, public hearing at our council meetings to discuss the ordinance, looking for input and things like that. Uh, we went through all the steps on that, that, that were required to jump through, and we did it, and the ordinance was passed. I don't think I left out anything, did I?
No, it was passed in October.
Yeah.
There's been some, some question about the emergency clause. I, you know, I don't do Facebook, so I, I, I hear these things secondhand, but I heard that one of the questions was, what was the emergency? Well, the emergency wasn't that there was an air quality emergency that day that we, we just had to have this ordinance to deal with. The emergency was that our air quality season, so to speak, starts November first and goes through February twenty-eighth each year, and, uh, so, we were considering this, the council was considering this ordinance in the middle of October after two or three delays, you know, because of hearings and so forth and, and, and public meetings. And so, an ordinance, if it goes through a normal, regular process, is not effective until thirty days after the date of adoption. So, because November first was the date that we needed to have the rules in place for this coming winter season, uh, the ordinance would have had to have been adopted before October first in order to be effective. So, since it was adopted in October, mid-October, it needed to have an emergency clause so it could go into effect by November first, uh, so that it would be effective for this. So, the emergency was an administrative process, uh, to have the rules in place by the date the air quality season began, not that there was an air quality emergency. So, did that, I hope that clears it up.
Can you explain to them too also, uh, the impact it had on the existing businesses here if we weren't in compliance?
Sure, I don't want to take a lot of time with regards to...
I'd take about another five minutes on this, and that, that'd be fine.
Okay, um, the, the, the only real tool that the town has to work with locally is, uh, is the wood stove heat. Uh, that, that is where we have some ability to, uh, draw up ordinances, approve plans, loan money, pre-grant funds to help reduce the amount of wood smoke that's, that's emitted. You know, there, there's charts and graphs that clearly show that, you know, about five, six, seven o'clock in the evening, the, the, it spikes up, the amount of particulate in the air, and then it'll drop off, and then about ten, eleven o'clock when people go to bed, they stoke up the stoves, it spikes up again, and then tomorrow morning about five or six to seven, early part of the morning, it spikes up again, and, and, you know, and that's not because Fremont Sawmill is stoking their boiler, it's because we all go and stoke our wood stoves and, and, and do that sort of stuff. So, it's pretty clear that it's, that that is the, the source of those spikes. Now, there's background that comes in all the time from Fremont Sawmill and Cornerstone and possibly dust off of the roads and, you know, other things that happen around locally, maybe a fire, you know, an uncontrolled, somebody's backyard burning that they shouldn't be doing or something like that, but, uh, so, so what's gonna, what will happen is, we can try to do some things to manage the, the wood stoves, the wood stove heating, and encourage people not to burn on the red days and, and all those sorts of things. But what will ultimately happen is, if we can't comply with the federal regulations as a community, I don't mean just the town council, but as a community, what will happen is when we have two air quality permits in Lakeview that are issued by the state of Oregon under the authority of the EPA, federal, federal government, and they are to Cornerstone and to Fremont Sawmill. And if, if we can't get into compliance, uh, with our air quality standards locally, uh, ultimately, the hammer that the federal government has is against Fremont Sawmill and Cornerstone. When their permits come up for renewal and, and our community is out of compliance, they can require those, those institutional businesses to install the very best available technology on their emissions, and those costs of controlling those emissions are extreme enough, and this is not Cornerstone or Fremont saying this, this is me, uh, it may be so expensive as they would choose to not install the equipment and close their facilities. And so, if you lose Cornerstone and if you lose Fremont Sawmill in our community, that's, that's, you know, another death nail.
Wouldn't there be help out there, Jan? Is there, is there, is help from the EPA for the new standard wood burning stoves? Wouldn't there be some help for industry to comply?
I, I don't know that, no. I, I don't, uh, I've spent my time working, trying to do what we can with the emissions that we have some ability to make.
Well, that's the only heat we got, and what do you do on that?
Well, we have sole source exemptions, uh, we have low income exemptions. Uh, the sole source exemption's going to go away this year. Now, uh, we want everybody that's got a sole source, that's the only heat they have, to come and let us know that. There's about seven hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming this spring and summer that we're going to try to install alternative systems for those people who only have a wood stove, uh, so that on those red days, only, you can burn your red wood stove ninety-five percent of the time, but on those red days and hopefully the yellow days, you'll use the fuel oil and electricity.
If you're cold on a yellow day or red day, you're gonna sit there and freeze because you can't burn.
Not if you have an alternative source.
Is you gonna pay for that, brother, John?
Yeah, I'm not gonna sit there and freeze.
Well, you know, John, we're, we're talking about, we're talking about a few days, not the whole month. You know, we're, this winter, we've had four, five? You know, we're not talking about, you know, I, my estimate is it costs ten dollars a day more, if your wood is free, it costs you ten dollars, maybe twelve dollars a day more to heat with something else. Uh, ten days of the year, a hundred dollars or so a year, uh, you know, what's going to be the impact to our businesses in Lakeview, our economy, if Fremont Sawmill was gone?
You don't wanna say that.
No.
Okay, y'all, I, so, I'm gonna have to end the discussion on this. As you can see, we're, we're really willing and able to, to talk to you about this. Don't, don't run from a bunch, a bunch of rumors. Come, talk to us, we'll just dust it with you. Not, you know, we have our points, I'm sure you have yours too, but, but this can be done in a, in a very congenial way, and, so, so come see us, let's talk about it and things, and I appreciate your comments, I hope you appreciate ours, but, um, anyway, I'm gonna have to move ahead on this topic.
Can I have one more public comment, please?
One quick comment.
What about marijuana?
The what?
Marijuana. The referendum that was passed in Oregon in November.
Well, that, it's passed.
Right, right. So, how is Lake County, Lakeview going to enact this new law? Is it a lie?
There's no enacting needed. We're, we're at the state's graces and that's it.
Oregon Liquor Control Commission's going through the process of developing rules.
The state legislature is doing a few things to, with the law, so...
The, the only thing the state legislature and, and the Oregon Liquor Control Committee can do is, is decide on how to retail market marijuana.
Right.
Marijuana is legal starting July of this year, and so, it'll be twenty sixteen before it's available, other than black market, I guess.
July of this year?
Uh, this year, it's legal.
Twenty fifteen, so...
That's a state law.
But it won't be available for sale until next year?
Mm, you'll have to get a black market one, I guess, or grow, grow your own. That's, that's what I should say, you can grow your own.
As far as retail, they have to set up the rules and regulations, which is the WCC, which...
The voters voted to do that.
Okay. Any other public comment? Going, 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 gone. Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and move into communications, comment, and informational items. Uh, there's some information about Main Street there for the, uh, with the council. I don't know if you have any comments?
I just wanted you guys to see what we kind of came out of the meeting that we had that Mike, Mike and Mike attended, uh, a month or so ago, three, three weeks ago, uh, and we, the, the Main Street coordinator for the state of Oregon, it's under the Parks and Rec Department, is going to come down, and there's already a follow-up, uh, meeting from that, assuming that it's going to be well received, uh, you know, there's some further discussions later in the spring, but, uh, it's, there seemed to be, I would say unanimous interest in at least bringing them to town to have further discussions about the Main Street approach to community revitalization.
Do they have party tickets?
They do, some.
They do, yes. Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and move into department reports. Scotty, you have anything to add?
Mr. Radley, do you have anything?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, distinguished council. Uh, I don't have anything else to add except we have, uh, all our new servers in place. We're still waiting for the techy guys to come and do the switch over, but, all of our servers and, uh, our computerated dispatches will be brought up to the present, uh, operating systems that are supported now. Uh, it was a pretty big hit for us.
Yeah.
You know, this is a lot of money for technology, and unfortunately, um, when the big micro people like Microsoft decide to change their platforms every five years, they make you change out everything, but we made it fourteen years on a five-year system, so hopefully we'll make it.
Get another fourteen.
Another fourteen.
Okay. Chief Dennis, do you have anything to add to your report?
I have nothing further. Is she a question?
Uh, anybody here from police?
I did talk to Chief Camp a little earlier, and, you know, I think we all know that he's been on, uh, on leave, you know, he's had some medical issues, back problem, quite honestly, and Jeff told me he didn't mind if I updated you. There's a, he's got another doctor's appointment, uh, out of town coming up on the twenty-third of, uh, February, and, and from that, maybe we'll have some definite direction. What do we do next?
Thank you. No engineering? Ray, do you have anything to add to your report?
Oh, I have some other, see what we're gonna say.
Forgot what you said, though.
Actually, uh, we'll do it in the, uh, the updates.
You what?
We'll do it in the manager updates.
Okay. And, Mr. Wilkie?
I have nothing to add to this. You guys have questions?
The collective crews are pretty busy down, down the south deep.
Yeah, they started the watering project. We'll see how the weather holds up.
I have a question for Mr. Wilkie. How did the towel get in the sewer line? How do you put, how do you put a wheat towel in a sewer line?
That's a good question. Nobody's blamed a towel yet. We had a big sewer backup. It actually wasn't, it, it...
In overflow.
In overflow or nothing like that, but it was becoming a significant move, and they did find a towel.
An owl?
A towel. Each towel, I guess.
Good towel, if you can flush one of those.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah.
Stop up right there to the house.
Didn't know what the problem was right away. Probably been in there for years, and it's just got that hard.
It worked its way down there.
Anyway, disaster was averted thanks to the quick work of our public works department and vacuuming and going, you know, tracing it backwards and getting it fixed.
Excellent. Amy, anything to add on yours? These are really nice, thank you, and I appreciate you.
Yeah, I'd like to get those too, because then, you know, when people are asking about things.
Two more weeks.
Okay, uh, we'll head and move into the consent calendar, which consists of the town council minutes of January the twenty-seventh. Any additions, corrections from the council? I'd accept a motion if there are none.
I'd newly approve the consent calendar of the minutes of January twenty-second, twenty-fifteen?
Twenty-seventh.
Have a motion to second to...
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
That's twenty-second.
Oh, I thought you said second, I'm sorry.
Um, well, maybe it is.
Our hearing's going, our members also.
I forgot already when they said...
I seconded it to twenty-seventh. All right, have a motion to second to approve the council meeting minutes from January twenty-seventh. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, mayor council updates. First thing I'd like to do is I interviewed Mr. Tim Harris, who showed an interest in the planning commission. Um, he seemed pretty enthusiastic about it, I guess, which is, is really nice, especially in this planning, there's a lot of work to it, so, at this time, I'd like to officially appoint Tim Harris for a three-year, um, term on the planning commission. Would you, with all these appointments now filled, would you do us a new sheet on it, please? Thank you.
Is that, you've got all of your...
That is, all appointments are, are filled now, yes.
The budget, that is completely...
Budget is, uh...
Yes, it was rate turn.
Rate, yeah, rate turn.
Oh, I think, yeah, you did mention that. Okay, sorry.
So, uh, and there is room for one more on the air, um, air quality board, but it, we have enough to, to operate as we are, so, I hope maybe somebody will come, volunteer and come in sometime, especially with all the dissatisfaction or input coming in, maybe somebody will come in and join some of our meetings, I, I look forward to that, so. Okay, um, the other thing is, I attended that community revitalization meeting with Mike and, and Ray. There's the signs that was discussed, these colorful signs out here in the middle of the table, we've got them in most of the stores in town, still putting in a few more, but, uh, the business leaders have been pretty receptive of that, and they're, they're happy to do anything that, that instills a little pride in our town and maybe helps our business, so, um... The council has all received, or you should have received, your copy of the audit. Uh, I don't expect you to go through and read it word for word, but there are several pages in the front of that that's important to us, that, that you do need to read and review, and if we have any questions or comments, you can either ask me, Ray, or if we can't do it, we'll certainly get Bob Beal to explain what your, your questions may be, but, uh, it, it is pretty interesting to read some of that and some of their assumptions and things, so...
You're sick.
Pardon?
I said, you're sick.
Oh. Hit it out of board, I know, but, but, anyway, I, I've been through it, and, and there are some questions that I'd like to discuss or some comments after everybody's had a, a while to get that read, so, that's actually all I have.
Uh, well, I just have, uh, went to a town safety meeting this morning, but, so it's, we're getting a lot of, everyone turning out for this, Amy's doing the job with getting things set up and making, have made a few steps towards some safety issues that were there before.
Good.
That's it.
That's it, okay. Mike?
I attended the economic development meeting the other night, but I think you asked over the mayor, and, and Ray probably has some comments on it, so I, I, that's all I have.
Ray, do you have a manager's update?
Uh, in addition to the economic development, Mike and I did attend a, a meeting at the county, uh, conference call the other day with regards to, uh, some of the enterprise on issues with, with, uh, Red Rock biofuels, so, uh, so we're, we're still working on that, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit in an executive session at the end of the meeting today, so, um, other than that, I guess I, I wanted, you know, just a couple things that I'm aware of, uh, you know, the county has a Parks and Rec master plan update that's going on, uh, although I failed to know the exact time of the meeting on, uh, February twenty-third in the evening, uh, I'm not sure if it's early evening or like seven o'clock in the evening, at the memorial hall, uh, at the county, there's going to be a, a public forum, public...
public input opportunity with regards to, uh, recreation needs, uh, in the, you know, in the. It's Lake County, it's not just the town of Lakeview. Obviously, we, we have a number of the citizens and a number of the opportunities. So, I am working with Ann Crimryan and others, uh, in that master plan update. Um, also, uh, if, if you get a chance, I don't think they mind. Uh, it's kind of interesting to go down and take a look at the transformation taking place at the former GM dealership, the Collins Motor Company, into the new, uh, True Value store. Uh, although I'll be really sad to see the vacant store on E Street in downtown Lakeview. Uh, I don't know what in the world they're gonna do with all that space that they're creating for the subs down there, but it's, it'll, it'll truly be a nice change for, for them and the shopping experience, so. And... Oh, the only other thing is I could just, it's way in the future of it. Uh, they're already planning for their ATV roundup this coming summer, uh, June thirteenth and fourteenth, uh, starting, you know, working from the fairgrounds and taking advantage of the ATV ordinances that we adopted at the county town, uh, to use streets and roads. So, uh, there'll be more information about that later, but, uh, you know, there's a group of people and they're pretty excited about moving forward with their newfound freedoms for use of ATVs.
I have seen it a few rounds.
There have been.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's it.
Okay. Uh, Amy, do you have anything to, no kidding? We don't have any old business, I'll move into the new business. Uh, the first item is the council liaison appointments, but we'll postpone that until we have another work session. Amy will get us a, a updated draft and we'll appoint at some future date. And our other item is resolution number eight seventy-four approving the contract for services with the CDBG Head Start Project Engineering Architectural Services. And we'll have to postpone that at this time also. We have a, go ahead.
If I may explain, there's a, uh, as you guys have approved the, uh, negotiating a contract with which we have done Anderson Engineering as a response to our request for proposals. Um, being, now, it's a, an independent contract from the retainer of work that Anderson Engineering does with the town. Uh, Mr. Bogardis is our attorney, is also, represents Anderson Engineering as Anderson's company, uh, in other matters. And so, John is in a, uh, potential conflict of interest position as far as there's a state, there's a place on the agreement for him to sign that it's met all the requirements of, of, of a procurement. But he is unable to sign that until Anderson and the town have released him from the potential conflict of interest. Anderson is out of town on vacation and so he's not able to do that. Just, I will postpone it for another meeting. Not that there's a problem with the agreement. I will have to change the effective date on the agreement from, from today to whatever next meeting date would lead to. Okay, that's the reason for it.
Any other questions? Okay, that's, uh, all the business before the council, except we do have an executive session tonight.
Oh, no, you've got, this gentleman here wants to talk about.
Oh, I did, go right ahead. Say your name and what you'd like to do, please.
I am Josh Flair Johann. I, this, last summer, I refurbished the, um, Surrattness Park equipment for my Eagle Scout project. Uh, the town council had funded me for that and I was just here to give an update on that. I do have a slideshow. If you would let me, I can go get my computer and show it to you.
You have a what?
Oh, yeah.
Slideshow.
Slideshow?
Yeah. I have a computer out of my car, I can go get it and show this slideshow to you.
How about if we schedule that for, I know you have sports and something starting. Can we maybe schedule that in conjunction with our work session on the tent?
Would that work for you?
Yeah, that should work.
Okay, I, I would like to see that, so.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, I use the park quite a bit, so I'd like to see updates and it's, have it kept out.
Yeah, I noticed it a while back because my house backs the, um, Surrattness Park. So, I see it out there and it just looks terrible.
Appreciate what you did.
You bet. So, we'll schedule you then on March tenth, is that the?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, three o'clock will be, are you out of school by three?
I, so, ends at three?
Okay, let's do three thirty, three heads.
All right. We, we might have an earlier session, but we'll put you on for three thirty, if that works.
All right.
Excellent, all right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, now, I guess, any other comment? I knew we'd get a comment out of you, Frank, go right ahead.
For any of you avid book readers, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, the library will be having, uh, book sales, uh, two for the price of one and so forth. So, be happy to, happy to come out and load up on books.
Excellent, thanks for mentioning that, you bet. Okay, anything else? All right, now, I am going to close the, uh, regular session so we can go into executive session under one ninety-two point six sixty parentheses two parentheses E, real property transitions. At this time, I'll have to ask everybody that's not pressed to please leave.